Call it up order, the regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees for Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. Please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item up is the approval of the special minutes, the special meeting minutes of January 2nd, 2024. Could I have a motion?
Motion to approve special meeting minutes of January 2nd, 2024.
Second.
Any changes? We'll call vote.
Trustee Paschma?
Deen.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler? Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Vink?
Aye.
Can I have a motion with respect to the special meeting minutes of the, for the meeting of January 8th, 2024?
Move to approve the special minute, uh, meeting minutes on the special meeting of January 8th, 2024.
Second.
Any changes? We'll call vote.
Trustee Paschma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler? Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Vink?
Aye.
Takes us to President's report. The Hinsdale Fire Department encourages residents to adopt the, your local fire hydrant by cleaning the snow and ice from around it. Members of the Hinsdale Fire Department try to clean out as many hydrants as possible, but there's simply too many to get to all of them. If residents adopt the hydrant near their homes and keep the snow clear, the fire department can see them and use them quickly in an emergency when every second matters. A few reminders for residents regarding s- the winter weather. Please try to keep your sidewalks safe and clear of snow to help students, mail carriers, and residents walking in the neighborhood. Please also do not blow snow or shovel snow back onto the street after it's already, the street has already been plowed, as it makes an unsafe condition for motorists. Residents, residential street parking at any time is not allowed after three inches of snowfall, and violators will be subject to ticketing. Cars parked on the street in residential areas greatly reduce the efficiency of snow removal efforts and create hazardous conditions. During the winter, more information concerning our, our winter weather program can be found on the village's website. Okay, the next item up is my pleasure to swear in a new police officer. His name is Tarek. I'm gonna, I practice this all day. Fairhat Bulgavich. Is that close? Good, well, good enough. I mean, I was looking for more. So Tarek is a recent graduate of the Illinois State University with a degree in human resource management. Tarek is a native of the western suburbs and is fluent in several languages, including Bosnian, German, Serbian, and Croatian. Since a young, at a young age, Tarek also was interested and passionate about law enforcement and is looking forward to being a positive and impactful member of the community here in Hinsdale. So Tarek was hired in August of 2023 and recently graduated from the suburban law enforcement academy in Glen Ellyn. So I'll swear in Tarek now if I can find my script. Tarek, can I come on up?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
Station manager?
Tarek, have a vote.
Have I been appointed a police officer?
Have you been appointed a police officer?
In the village of Hinsdale?
In the village of Hinsdale.
And the counties of DuPage and Cook?
And the counties of DuPage and Cook.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States?
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Illinois?
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge, discharge the duties?
Police officer?
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
So you don't have to be polite and say, this is, thank you very much. Congratulations. Okay, citizens petition. Any citizen wishing to be heard on any matter on or off the agenda? If it's something on the agenda, I'd prefer you wait until we call the matter.
I'm Sarah, Sarah Barclay, B-A-R-C-L-A-Y, 433 East Third Street. I am here to ask that the village board do, not ask, I should say, demand that they do a traffic study for the intersection of Chicago Avenue and Lincoln where the Fuller car wash sits. The worst of all possible tragedies happened to a family in this town, and Fuller's car wash continues to have repeated violations, traffic violations at that intersection. And by my count, there are, I think, five curb cuts at that intersection where they sit, numerous ways for them to enter and exit, and they continue to park vehicles on the sidewalk. I have pictures. It happened as recently as last Sunday. I'm happy to show those to you if you'd like. I have been there since they put up the bollards, which I will say, I think the people of this village need to know that those are engineer, um, they've been vetted by an engineering firm. I don't believe that they have, um, one that is capable of assessing if the, these bollards could withstand the force of the impact that killed Sean Richards. So I think the village is owed that. And after repeated incidents, not just of hitting a child, but going into the businesses across the street, Fullers and the village has failed to take action, and I'm demanding that they take action. I have been to Fuller's numerous times. I have been to the police station numerous times, and they continue to pull out of the car wash, go around bollards that they installed, and park directly on the sidewalk at the exact spot where a child was killed. And this keeps happening over and over and over again, and I think it's time that this village does something. If Fuller's is not going to stop this behavior, because clearly the death of a child is not stopping it, then I think it's incumbent upon the village to do something, and I would like to see that happen.
So you start out by saying you'd like a traffic study. What, what do you envision a traffic study?
Well, I, I would like to see the amount of traffic that goes in and out. We are at a, a very busy four-way stop there, especially when, um, also there's train traffic that stops traffic there. And with numerous ways to enter and exit that, very close to a stop sign, I mean, if you, if you remember, if you can visualize where they can enter and exit, it is mere feet from where a stop sign sits. Not to mention that they, there are always people cross, um, crossing back from the Fuller's Tire Center to the car wash. They drive directly from Fuller's Center, directly across the street to the car wash. If you look at the tire patterns on the ground, it is clear that they use the sidewalk to, um, to park vehicles and for vehicles to exit and enter. And also, when you, on any busy day, you look at even where they enter the car wash, it backs up traffic, and the gentleman that I spoke to that's managing there now said to me directly that he has a problem with pedestrians and cars even at the entrance. They're admitting it's a problem. He said to me, and I quote, "I am trying my best." The best is not good enough. It is not good enough, and our village deserves better than this. And I'm hoping that a traffic study could hopefully show that there is too much traffic going in and out for that intersection, and maybe that parcel needs to be rezoned. And I, I know that in Womet, for instance, there was, recently, they wanted to put in a McDonald's drive-through at a busy intersection in town, and for safety reasons, they wouldn't do it. It's, it's a drive-through, and this in essence is a drive-through. It's like a drive-through window.
So a couple points. One, just going back to the bollards. So the original design that the Fullers came to us with had bollards that were, I think they were four feet apart. We did, I did retain an engineer, and the Fullers agreed to pay for that engineer. It's HR Green, it's a structural engineer, and that engineer said that if we put bollards between the, the, the four-foot apart bollards, so the bollards ended up being two-foot apart as they, as they, as they're facing Washington Street, that that would be adequate to withstand a car going 35 miles an hour.
Head-on?
Head-on, head-on, because it would hit two of those. Now, today, at about 3:30, I received an email from Mr. Richards, the, the father of the deceased child, who hired a, a, somebody who I think is a traffic engineer or something, you know, some kind of engineer who, who's in the business of bollards. And he sent me a study, and we forwarded it on to HR Green. So if, if we, if HR Green rethinks what they're doing, we'll revisit it, because this is not going to be the final, the final construction of the bollards and the brick facing is not going to happen until the spring, because they can't just do, they can't put the, put that in until the spring. So we will look at that. We will make sure. But I, we, we did retain an engineer, and we did get a, we did get a, uh, a, I have an email from the engineer that says if we place the bollards, as I said, in between the existing bollards, that will be enough, and the, and the Fullers have agreed to do that. In light of what we received, we'll look at that again, but it, it will be, it will be safe. As to, you brought up about McDonald's going in another, another suburb. The, the difference between that and what we have here is that was going to be something new going in. It, everything I know about zoning law tells me you can't take an existing business and tell them they can no longer have their business there, because I think that violates all kinds of constitutional property rights. You can't rezonate property out from under.
Not by legislative action, by this board?
No, not by, well, I don't know that, we, we certainly can't. I'm not sure that anybody can under the constitution without compensating them for the business. And even then, I don't know if you could do it. So, you know, I don't know that there's a reason to have a traffic study for any kind of zoning, um, relief, but I do know that the police chief has spent an incredible amount of time on this in the last couple days, and I know that they've put cones around there now, and if, and I, and I got another email from Mr. Richards that said they're violating the cones or driving around the cones. If that's the case, we're on it. I mean, we're, we, I, I understand the issue, and we're, we're looking at it. I agree with you. It's a lot of traffic for, for a, a, a neighborhood that is, you know, should be low traffic. It has a lot, there's a, there are people running across the street. There's a lot of cars there, but we're going to do everything to make sure the cars do not park on the sidewalks and do not go on the sidewalk, and we'll, and we'll, we'll take action.
Okay, well, I, I mean, on Sunday, when I went to police station with photos taken five minutes prior, he said he can't retroactively give a citation, but would go over there and talk to him. So I've been told three times, I'll, I'll, I'll call Owen. I'll have a talk with him. Well, this isn't, this isn't happening, and I guess my other, my question is, until the proper bollards are installed, we're okay with bollards as-is?
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm, are we as a community okay with bollards that would not prevent this, a type of tragedy like this from happening again?
I think it's, well, it, it's, it's safe now. It could be made safer, and we're going to do that. It's safe now, because the way it would work is two bollards would stop any car. That's, that's the conclusion of, of the, and what you, the only time you'd have an issue is if a car would, would hit the one bollard straight on, because a car's usually about four foot. Well, you wouldn't impact two bollards, you'd only hit one. So we want to rectify that situation, but.
And I understand that, and I, I appreciate that, but until that happens in the spring, we've got three months.
Right.
And as of Sunday, they are pulling cars onto the sidewalk, and more bollards would not prevent them from pulling cars onto the sidewalk.
They should not be pulling cars onto the sidewalk.
I mean, I don't know if we can have a policeman stand there all day to make sure this doesn't happen, because it's clearly a repeated violation that they don't care.
Yeah.
They clearly are laughing in the faces of pedestrians, of concerned citizens who see it happen time and time again. I've been there several times, and he tells me I'm doing my best. I'm doing my best, and he says I'm at a bad location.
Right.
Well, that's not the, the people who live there, that's not our problem. That's his problem.
So I talked to the police chief today, and we're, we're going to take action. We'll issue tickets if they don't, you know, we'll issue citations if they're on the, if they park on the sidewalk, if they take their cars on the sidewalk, we will start issuing citations. Okay?
All right.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay. Um, hello, my name is Jennifer Reenan, R-E-E-N-A-N, and I live with my family at 329 East Sixth Street. First, I want to say thank you to Village Manager Kathleen Gargano and President Colley for granting us some more time to build consensus around what we hope will be a successful plan to preserve the bricks on Sixth Street in the coming year or two. I also want to say, while I acknowledge that it is difficult to assign value to an asset that has literally been under our feet for over 125 years, I remain somewhat disappointed that no apparent attempt has yet been made to do so. The financial analysis that has been done is still too short-term, in my opinion. While we are hopeful that the bids end up being lower than expected, we also hope over the next few months to make a stronger case to you, our elected trustees, as to why brick streets are financially manageable, ecologically responsible, and important to the entire community of Hinsdale. In my opinion, it is simply a fallacy to argue that you cannot support spending X amount more on Sixth Street versus another street in Hinsdale, because it would be unfair to those residents who do, who don't live on Sixth Street. Setting aside the numerous benefits enjoyed by all Hinsdale residents and having a historic district with intact historic features like our brick street, claiming that brick street costs more because they have higher upfront costs, material cost, is misleading. In the long-term, brick streets do not cost more than asphalt streets. Brick street costs significantly less. One study done by Carnegie Mellon found that when annualized, municipalities could spend up to 6.5 times more on maintaining asphalt street versus brick streets. And yes, you may then ask, why not do all the stricks, the, the streets in brick in Hinsdale? In fact, some cities have indeed started uncovering their old brick streets that have been paved and repaved over and over with asphalt. We are not asking for that. We are simply asking for you to help us save the ones that we do have. Thank you for listening to me and to the residents of Sixth Street and for all that you do to make our community such a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
So just so, I did talk to trustees about this, but, um, we, we planned on doing this construction, this construction season for two reasons initially. One was that we had a, we had a, a grant from the federal government to do infrastructure work. This was the second half of the grant, and the second reason was is that we have, we have, you know, we have to separate the sewers in connection with a, a settlement agreement we have with Salt Creek. So we have, we've talked about putting this off for one year. Started in the construction season of 2025, and that will give the residents time to find the ability to either have an SSA or we can have a referendum in November. But, you know, you and I've had this conversation probably now five times, but I, I will repeat myself once again, that, you know, this is a, we budgeted $4.5 million for the work on Sixth Street. If we do an all-brick Sixth Street, that would be a $6.5 million project for four blocks, and that's just, that's a lot of money for a village. We are willing to put in $800,000 to do a, do a hybrid approach. We are not willing, as a board, and you can talk to all the trustees, you can ask them now, that we are not willing, not, not willing to put in the extra $2 million to do the whole street in brick. So, so the, the cost of a brick street versus an asphalt street is $2.8 million. We're willing to put in $800,000, not the additional $2 million. If there, if you think this is a community benefit, there's one way to test that. Have a referendum. I've offered the residents that. A referendum will tell you if this has a community benefit. You will tell after the referendum. We'll all know. I have my views as to how that will turn out, but you can have that. The other thing you can have is a referendum for the, um, an SSA for the entire, um, uh, Robbins Historic District, and then you pull in both First Street and, and Sixth Street. And that way, the referendum would ask that the residents that they pay $3 million, which would be the $2 million we're talking about for Sixth Street, and $1 million to do First Street in all brick. And then we see how that goes. I have my views as to whether that would work out. The last alternative is this, is whether Sixth Street does its own SSA. Those are the three alternatives. You'll have until July 1st to decide which of those three alternatives you want, but we, you can come every meeting from now to July 1st and ask me to pay for the entire, or the board to pay for the entire $2.8 million to do four blocks in all brick, and the answer from me is always going to be the same. No, we're willing to put in $800,000, but not the additional $2 million. The idea that brick streets are less expensive is only when you think they're going to last for a very long time. If you use that logic, you should do every street in brick, right? And then, because this is not going to be the existing brick, we're going to take up the existing brick, save some of it, and put down new brick. That's the, what the, what it would cost. We can do that on any street. And there's, and there's, and, as somebody mentioned to me, if we're going to do an all-brick, brick street for the benefit of the community, why not do the central business district, something there as opposed to Sixth Street? So that, it's just, the logic just eludes me, and so we can, we can continue to have this conversation, but you're not going to change my mind about that. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
So what's the status of the bids, then?
The status, well, here's, here's the.
Are we pulling them for now?
Well, well, here's the thing. I, I told the residents last night that we would, that we would submit the bids, um, for an all-brick street and a hybrid street, okay? And I, I thought we would do that this week, open the bids in March, then we'd have a, a better idea as to what the cost would be. After the meeting, and I wish people would speak up to me during the meeting, but they told me this after the meeting, that the concern that the staff has about submitting the bids, um, is that, you, you know, there's a lot of work into getting an exact number, and if you, if you, if you go out to bid and then, um, you, you, you cancel all the bids or reject all the bids because we decided not to do it, you've just put a, a contractors to a lot of work that they'll resent next time, and when you go out again, you're unlikely to get them to.
Might not submit a bid.
They might submit a bid. So what we decided to do is, is, um, with HR Green and our staff, they are going to do more work and call around to a lot of these, um, contractors and tell them the exact situation. We're planning to do this. We want to get an exact number. There's a lot of interest, because there's about fi- four, five of these firms that do brick streets, and so they're very interested in getting our business. Try to get as, as close to an exact number as we can, so they can share that with the residents. It's not going to be a formal bid process, but it's going to be more work in getting numbers for both a hybrid street and then an all-brick street. And one of the things I also talked to the residents about is if there's some tweak they want to do, you know, if they want to do an SSA that's less than an all-brick street, you know, we can talk about that too before July. Like, for instance, there was a suggestion that we do the intersections in asphalt, the streetscape in brick, which would, but that doesn't bring, and my, my estimate is that that brings on the cost of about $300,000, not that much. But there are, there are ways we can take a look at that, but what I'm telling the community is that we will get more exact numbers by March from the contractors. It won't be a formal bid process.
Estimates, non-binding.
Non-binding estimates, with an understanding, you know, because I don't want them to, to think that they submit a bid and, and spend a lot more work than they otherwise do, because if we get within, you know, $100,000, it's good enough for us to make, for decision-making purposes. Any questions? Sorry.
Hello. My name's Sarah Chase, and I'm the board president of the Hinsdale Swim Club. I'm addressing you all today on behalf of our club regarding the Hinsdale Community Pool. I promise to only take up three minutes of your time. I'm also going to email this request to the Parks and Recreation Commission and Superintendent Michael Hayes and follow-up at their meeting on Feb- February 13th. You may or may not know that the pool deck at Hinsdale Central's new pool is being completely torn up and reconstructed to fix drainage errors made in the construction process. Before alarm bells go off, this cost is not going to cost the taxpayers, but being settled among those involved in the construction. This project is slated, is slated to start at Hinsdale Central in early May, as soon as the girls' and boys' water pool seasons are completed, rendering the pool unusable for the entire summer. We currently have 350 swimmers on our team, and without the Hinsdale Central pool being accessible, we are lacking pool space for our swimmers prior to the summer opening. Given that our community high school pool is out of commission, we are asking for the village's help to open the community pool at the beginning of May. Once filled, our club would utilize the pool every day after school and on weekends. Our best-case scenario would be to have access to the pool beginning Monday, May 6th. We would gladly pay for this usage and any additional costs incurred to keep the pool running and heated throughout these extra weeks. May 6th is 19 days prior to the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, the pool's official opening. As noted in the 150th Anniversary Celebration, Hinsdale and Light's Hinsdale Swim Club is the oldest swim club in the area and developing and contributing to Hinsdale's storied swimming reputation. We've been practicing at both Hinsdale Central and the Hinsdale Community Pool for 65 years. This summer will be our 55th Annual Midsummer Classic Meet. During the pandemic year of 2020, we agreed to pay the village an additional $23,500 to assist in opening the pool for our team and for the Hinsdale community. That amount was in addition to the $5,000 swim meet rental fee, of which we were not able to host due to the COVID mitigations put forth by the state of Illinois. In total, we paid the village $43,700 that year, and we'd like to thank our contribution gave the community some semblance of a normal summer by having a pool in which to swim. Last but not least, it's an Olympic year, and we have a few swimmers aspiring for the Olympic trial cuts. The extra training time in our 50-meter pool can only help their cause. If the village finds a way to open the pool earlier, it could be a new source of revenue for the pool this summer. Again, I will follow up with the Parks and Recreation Commission and our village superintendent. On behalf of the Hinsdale Swim Club, thank you for taking the time to listen to this request.
Yeah, thank you. So this is first I've heard of this. So have you, have you talked to anybody at the, at the Parks and Rec Committee about this?
Um, no, I'm going to reach out, send an email to them tomorrow.
And so when you, let's see, the pool opens when, I can always get Labor Day and Memorial Day.
Memorial Day, yeah.
So, so would, would you need it after Memorial Day or, or not?
We rent it, so we are, we have a contract, and we rent it after Memorial Day.
From us?
Yes, from you.
Okay, okay. So this would be just prior to that?
This would be in addition to our contract.
So I, I mean, I don't know if anybody has a problem with it. We just have to figure out whether it's doable, right?
Right, right. Staffing and.
Staffing.
President Colley, I don't, I don't think there's a need to have to go to a commission. You can do this with the staff.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll, we'll do it. We'll make it work. If they say you can make it work, we can make it work.
Okay.
Okay?
Wonderful. I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Yes, if you can just reach out to us and we can go through the logistics. Obviously, we made this work in 2020, and, um, the key issue has, revolves around the staffing, and I think it's, it's the same issues that we dealt with before. So just set up a time and you can come talk to staff, and we'll proceed from there.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Uh, Bill Harlow, 144 East Sixth Street. Uh, I just want to express appreciation to Tom, Kathleen, George, the others who were there from, uh, the board and, and the village staff who met with some of us who live on Sixth Street, uh, last night. Uh, we felt like we made some good progress and are finally having the sort of collaborative conversation that we've wanted to have all along. Uh, the understanding that we're going forward with, which you talked about this evening, Tom, is that, uh, we have until July, uh, to make a decision on what we might want to do in terms of, will there be a referendum? Will there be an SSA? If there is an SSA, what might it encompass? And so on. So along those lines, uh, if there were to be an SSA that was, uh, Robbins Park Historic District, we assume that that would include First Street.
I think so. I think that makes sense.
Yeah. Um, do we have any engineering for First Street?
Not as much, but we, the, the ballpark is. Not as much, but we, the, the ballpark is a million dollars between, the delta between the, um, hybrid approach for First Street and a full brick is about a million dollars.
Okay.
And we talked about an SSA that would be three instead of two for a, if it's a broader SSA.
Right.
We can, we'll try to refine those numbers, but that's the, that's the estimate that the staff has.
And would that be just for First from Elm to County Line?
Oh, I think it would be entire current brick First Street.
So it would include the block that was redone?
I think Park and Garfield. What, what are we talking about?
Two blocks, Elm to, Elm to County.
Elm to County line.
The two that are on.
The two blocks, that's why it would be half of.
Okay. So would it, it would include that, uh, First and Elm intersection that you were saying last night would need to be readdressed?
That we may do some maintenance there, but it wouldn't be reconstructed. That would stay as is because that was done in twenty sixteen.
Sixteen.
There may be just some more, pull up some areas that had settled and reset those, but we wouldn't reconstruct that whole intersection as part of a concept for First Street.
Okay.
So we would take the, what would be like the westernmost edge of that intersection and work towards county in that idea or that concept.
All right. Um, I ask because particularly given it, it sounds like the village is not going to solicit formal bids, but instead ask for sharpen your pencil estimates.
Right, right.
Uh, you know, one of the challenges that we face, and I say this with the assumption that everyone here in an ideal world would like to see the streets remain brick.
Right.
Um, so one of the challenges we face in having conversations with our neighbors, whether they're on these two streets, Sixth and First, or the more general Robbins Park District, not to mention village-wide, um, is that, uh, it's difficult to talk with someone about, well, how much would this cost me? Which is an obvious and fair question.
Right.
Um, if we only have general numbers. So I, I guess I'm hoping that if we're not having formal bids, that, um, these would nonetheless be estimates that we can essentially rely on. And what I mean by that is if there's a substantial difference, once it actually did go to a formal bid, that then maybe the village would make up.
Well, that, that's the way it would work.
That difference.
An SSA, the way the SSA would work is you would be capped at an amount. Say you had an SSA for two million dollars, okay? If it came in for, well, if it came in for five million, we would have to just scuttle the whole thing and start all over, right? But if it came in at two point one or two point two, the SSA would be, the village would pick up the difference. That's the way an SS, what it works. So it would be, that's the cap on what the, what the residents would pay on their, uh, ta- property tax assessment. If the S, if the construction was less than two million, the residents would get the benefit of that. So, so it would be an estimate that would be a cap to what you would pay as far as the residents. And the only caveat I have is in some extreme situation where their bills came in so much that the village couldn't make up the difference on the end if it was above the estimate that we have, which is now two million dollars. Does that, you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
So it's, so it's a, it's a, it's the, you have, you have the downside benefit, but no upside risk. The upside risk is the village within reason.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we get a formal bid though before we vote?
We would get a formal bid before we, but we, we could find, but he's talking about by, between now and July one.
Right.
Okay. So, but the way the process would work, you, you can.
But that's just like an indication of interest.
Right, we will, we will get more, we will get better numbers between now and July one, and they will be indicative, but it will be the cap. You, you can tell people it won't be any more than this.
Yep.
Okay. Then when we go out to formal bid next April, maybe, we will get exact numbers or, or exact estimates, okay? And then we would adjust that. But, you know, the thought would be that, that that would be, you know, we could use the existing numbers. That's the assumption I'm working under.
Okay.
So. And it, because I, is I, and maybe to, just so you follow, the reason why I didn't do bids is because I don't want people who are the five or six people to do this to not work with us next year when we do this. That's the reason.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and that makes sense. And I think that we would be keen to, uh, make sure that, uh, you know, RFPs were sent to companies that have done this in this area. In particular, as opposed to just putting it on the I-DOT bid platform.
We, we know people that, we're in contact with companies that do this very thing.
Okay. So it, it's helpful to us to be able to say that with an SSA, the residents, whomever those wind up being, um, there's a limit to their exposure.
Exactly.
So voting for an SSA is not an open-ended thing.
Exactly.
Whatever comes in, that's just what you're on hold for.
Exactly.
Okay. Um, that's a helpful clarification. The only other thing I would quickly ask then is at some point before, well, two, two quick things. One is before too long, we would like to have a conversation about, um, if it was just a Sixth, Sixth Street SSA, who is included in that?
Right.
Is that people who have Sixth Street addresses? Is that people who have driveways on Sixth Street, which is different?
Right.
Or is it people who have frontage?
Right. Yeah. So I, I leave it to you to do that because as I said, there's, there's issues with, you know, the, the upside of including more people as you spread it around more. The downside is people are more on the periphery or more likely to vote no. And we have to have fifty-one percent to do this. So I, I don't know that the village should be making those decisions. I think the Sixth Street residents should be making those decisions because tactically it's in your best interest to make those decisions.
I agree with that. So, so what you're saying is that we can come forward with a proposal as to who would be included in the SSA?
With the caveat, the properties have to be contiguous. You can't, it can't be the checkerboard of.
No, right, to be sure. But, but contiguous, our understanding of that, based on the two letters that we've received from the village starting in the beginning of December, contiguous basically means street.
Exactly.
Because there are, there are lots on, on our block of Sixth Street, um, where people have through lots between Fifth and Sixth. They didn't receive the letters, they don't have Sixth Street addresses.
Right.
Um, so, I mean, they're, it, it looks a little bit like a bar graph. Um, so contiguous just means.
Yeah, and I, I'm not an expert in SSAs, but I, I know that you can have a larger group or a smaller group, because we had the same issue before.
Yeah.
Um, when we did, you know, flood controls and we did it in, in the Woodlands. So, um, but I, I, I don't know exactly what the rules are, I just know they have to be contiguous. But I, but I do think that, that it's, it's, it's better for you guys to kind of, as a community, decide who's in and who's not in and how, how widely you define it. So you can, if you're going to do that, you make the fifty-one percent.
Yeah. Well, we'll take the temperature of the room of, of the street.
Right.
Um, uh, then my last thing is, i- if we're going to get these, uh, more precise estimates, I would ask that we try to get those no later than March.
Yes, that's the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then we can have those numbers, and then we have a few months to do exactly what I've been talking about and see what people's appetite is.
Right, right. And the other thing we talked about, just so the trustees know, is we're going to take another look at trying to get grants to help with this. Of course, as Kathleen pointed out last night, usually the grants, particularly federal grants, the one thing they look at is the, the number of impacted residents. To the extent you're doing one street, it's less likely you get a grant than if you're doing, you know, like, we got a grant for fire truck, which benefits the whole community. So that said, we're still going to look at grants because it would be a benefit to everybody, it would, it'd be a, it would be a relief to the trustees and to me if we could get some, some grant money to help with this. So we're going to, we're going to try that. I'm not holding out a lot of hope, but we'll try that.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you. We're, we appreciate that we seem to have a more collaborative environment going on now. So thank you.
Okay. What's that? Well, it's a special service area. Okay, and we'll just, we, we sent out, we have a question and answer that we circulated to Sixth Street residents. So, and basically what it means is a group of, of homeowners that are, have properties that are contiguous, you know, meaning they touch each other, that, um, you have a special assessment to do some improvement. We did one in the Woodlands where we did their streets and gutters, where the entire Woodlands was one special service area. And we did it, at, at a time before when there were drainages that were unique to a, to a block. And they just, so you add it to their tax bill and the residents, it was issued a, issued a bond and the bonds are paid by the incremental taxes that those residents pay for that particular project. So it's, it's a tool of finance infrastructure. Any, anyone else? Yeah, we can, which one is it?
Nine A.
Nine A, okay. We, we'll, I'll remember. Anybody else? Okay. So that takes us to first reads. The first read up is we have, and Luke's not here, so I'm going to take these, but we have three properties, we can go through them individually or handle them together, but there are, um, two seventeen West Hickory Street, um, five fifteen South Lincoln Street, and, and six oh five East Third Street. And all three of these properties are up for approval for the, um, the preservation incentive certificate and, um, the related, uh, grant and the property tax rebate. Uh, so each of these was, was addressed by the Historic Preservation Commission, and all three of them were passed by four to zero. All of them involve, um, substantial work to be done on the house. The way that works is that ten thousand dollars, which is the limit on our rebate, is paid after, is reimbursed to the homeowner after the work is done. And then there's a calculation for each of them, what the property tax rebate would be as it relates to the village's portion of property taxes. So, you know, the, the plant commission has, has looked at these, we've got pictures of them all and a write-up on all of them. Is there any, any questions from anyone?
No.
The only, the only issue that, that, that I was thinking of is that we budgeted fifty thousand dollars for this, and we're in the second meeting in January, we have three. So if we approve these, that's thirty thousand dollars. We've got twenty thousand dollars for the rest of the year. Now, these projects work so that they have to do the work, and so you don't pay the money until much later, but, you know, we should keep in mind that, um, you know, that, that we either going to have to approve more for this or, or not do as many homes. I'm in favor of allocating some more money to this. If, you know, it's, it's relatively small dollars in the grand scheme of things, and we'll see how many we get. But I just point out that this is three out of, you know, thirty thousand dollars here.
What's, what's the pipeline? Do we know?
I don't know what the pipeline is.
We have more in stow right now. We're working on the larger projects.
How, how many?
We at least have, I don't know, five coming through.
Yeah, okay. So we'll talk about that.
Some of them are smaller, and as you said, they'll get paid out earlier. Some of these projects, they could extend until twenty twenty-five for that payout. So it's a little hard to estimate.
Okay. So move this to second read?
These will go on consent.
Can we get, go on to consent? Okay, any consent agenda? Okay, great. All right, consent agenda. Okay, that takes us to... Oh, anybody that was here, you don't have to stick around. This, um, if you want to leave, okay. What's that? Yeah, so all three go on the consent agenda. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah, and if you're here for these items that we just approved, you don't have to come back next time, it's on the consent agenda. Okay? Thank you. I didn't realize your people were here for that. Okay, thanks. No, that's fine. Okay, who had the, let's see, no, we've got the.
Seven D.
Seven D. Seven D. We got to approve the, um, payment to Thomas Dodge Chrysler in Highlands, Indiana for the purchase of two police vehicles for eighty-four thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Uh, these are two vehicles that both have a lot of mileage on. One has eighty-two thousand miles and one has seventy thousand miles. Um, the, uh, the cost of these cars come within budget. And even though these are seventy thousand mile, miles, as we know, police cars, because they do a lot of idling and stopping, uh, you know, seventy thousand miles is a, a lot of miles for a police vehicle. So any, uh, objection or thoughts on this? Put it on a consent agenda.
Is this part of a joint purchasing program?
I think it is.
Yeah, I, I would have assumed it is, but I mean, that would be like, we'd have to bid it out unless it was part of a joint purchasing program.
Yeah, no, I think it is. Um, but you want to, we can, we can revisit this next time if you want to talk to a police chief.
Yeah, or if just somebody can confirm it before the meeting.
Do we know? Well, we'll figure it out before the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, um, consent agenda is, first we've got the accounts payable. Who had those?
Uh, I had the bag and found everything to be in order, so I moved to approve payment of the accounts payable for the period of December thirty, twenty twenty-three through January seventeen, twenty twenty-four in the aggregate amount of two million one hundred nineteen thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-nine cents, as set forth on the list provided by the village treasurer, of which a permanent copy is on file with the village clerk.
Second. Roll call vote?
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bean?
Aye.
Okay, we have one item on the consent agenda, eight B, which is for the custodial services at KLM. Can I have a motion with respect to that?
Move to approve consent agenda, item eight B.
Second. Roll call vote?
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bean?
Aye.
The next item up is, are two, there are two items here that are Luke's items that I will take care of. These refer to issues that, to be referred to the plant commission. As the trustees may recall, we do these things as second reads because if we're going to refer to the plant commission, there's no reason to have two reads. We just defer for them to, to look at. Um, the first one is refer to the plant commission of, um, uh, a, a, a consideration of an ordinance event mending various sections of our zoning code relating to short-term rentals. And it was brought to the staff's attention that there are certain single-family homes in town that have commercial short-term uses, and we'd like to limit the, um, the, uh, restrict the, the, the time in which you can have a short-term rental to no less than six months or a hundred and eighty days. So that's, do you want to speak to that?
Yes. Ashley Hill, eight twenty-two West Eighth Street. I'd like to thank the board of trustees and the Village of Hinsdale staff. Rob has been very helpful in informing us about the process of this new ordinance in relation to all residential rental homes. As fourth-generation residents of Hinsdale, we are very proud and happy to be a part of this community. We went to Saint Isaac's, and we've led many parades with our American Legion posts. We've even driven President Colley in our Jeep. Hinsdale means so much to us. We want to comply within village code, and we are all very happy that you're allowing this topic to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission. The idea of helping our community in between closings was something we didn't even think of. A local physician and resident reached out to rent our great-grandfather's home as they sold their own home, but their children needed to finish out the school year. Due to life's unexpected demands, it's something our community needs. We are not only protecting our historic homes of Hinsdale from demolition, but allowing local families and residents to stay in their town when they are in between closings, home renovations, and emergency repair situations. What if you found yourself in this position? It only takes a second for a burst pipe or storm to cause damage. Our ninety-four-year-old neighbor is currently staying in a hotel because her boiler broke last week. We all live in a changing society. Your draft is a good starting point, but we hope for some more flexibility from the village. Thank you guys again for all that you do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. My name is Michelle Crowe, and I live at two hundred South Bowden Street. And from November, let's say, late twenty twenty-two through first quarter of twenty twenty-three, the house next door to ours operated as an Airbnb. And there were probably twenty groups who came through between Thanksgiving and, let's call it Saint Patrick's Day. And at first, it was just a nuisance. The garbage piled up in the alley. As it overflowed, the guests would use whatever garbage can was nearby. But then, as the bookings picked up and they were cycling through sometimes two groups in a weekend, it became really unsettling and at times quite frightening. For one reason or another, travel, I have a teenager. I'm often home alone with just our elderly dog. And it got a little scary. There was a big Super Bowl party there. We all know the statistics on Super Bowl Sunday. It's not a good night for a lot of people. And I happened to be home alone with this big party of people that, they're untraceable. We have two dozen children in the two-hundredth block of South Bowden. So I urge you to, sorry, I understand what you're saying, and people, life does happen. But I urge you to adopt this amendment, to clearly communicate it to the real estate investor community, and to make the fines onerous enough that no one will just roll it into their cost of doing business. Because we didn't buy a home next to a hotel. Certainly not one without a security staff.
So you think six months is an appropriate time?
Yeah, I think since then, the house has changed hands, and the owner now rents it out for six months at a time. And it's fine. It's fully furnished. People drop in, they drop out, they get on with their lives. But I don't need two different people there on Friday night and Saturday night.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This is my first time doing something like this, so sorry. I didn't know how to really come prepared or anything. I manage two Airbnbs on Justina Street in Hinsdale, four fifteen and four twenty-one Justina. And currently, we have two residents who have each been there for more than six weeks. Both of them are having home repairs at the, you know, currently, right now. And that's what you'll see with a lot of our guests. And kind of going back off of what we just heard, I feel like if there's already a thirty-day ordinance and those specific hosts are breaking that rule by letting, you know, short-term, you know, three-day minimum, whatever, people coming in, I feel like six months won't really do that. In fact, it'll possibly hinder Hinsdale residents, like how she mentioned, would want to, you know, stay in their community during that time. You know, these people I stay in contact with, they're very nice. They follow rules, you know, these are, it's a better option versus having to do a hotel if it's going to be something, you know, longer rather than just a couple of days or weeks. And I think it's beneficial for a lot of people. So, yeah, and that's what I'll see is a lot of people who go into these properties are from Hinsdale. They're here either for, honestly, it's mostly just they're getting their home remodeled or something like that. It's never people, you know, people aren't throwing month-long parties.
Right, and so maybe one of the things the plant commission can look at, and I don't know how difficult it would be to police this from a village's perspective, that if you have, if you can prove that you're a Hinsdale resident and you're suffering from, you know, your water pipes broke or something like that, that that's an extenuating circumstance that's different from somebody out of town coming and running for a short term. I don't know whether they can police that, but, you know, I mean, I, the lady that spoke just before you has a valid point. You have a valid point.
Yeah.
So maybe there's a way to do both. I don't know. So, but I think the plant, the plant commission is the one that has a public hearing on this and hears from everybody. So I invite you to, if we refer to them, to come and talk to them.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I have a question, Tom.
Yeah.
Is there any oversight? How do we know that these owners of the properties are adhering to this code?
We have a code enforcement officer. But a lot of times, we rely upon residents to complain.
That was my question. So there's no permanent application that the owner would submit saying that X, Y, and Z is staying for ninety days?
No, I think you, I mean, it's like most zoning code violations, you rely upon, like, the woman in the second row to come and tell us that, you know, that this house is turning over. I mean, that's the only way we really know. I mean, we don't have a Hinsdale FBI or something, so.
Well, no, I knew that. I just wasn't sure if there was an application that people, owners would submit on behalf of their renters.
We don't get involved unless there's a potential violation.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know a better way to do it, so.
Can we, can we ask the plant commission to just put that in their hopper of looking into requiring a rental permit that would just provide us with that information?
You mean that they'd have to have an agreement that?
Like an application.
An application.
Or inform, something of that.
Sure, sure, sure.
Oh.
That we could, we could demand to inspect or, yeah.
So we have the name of the parties?
Yeah.
Who's going to be paying the water bill, the garbage, stuff like that, where it does pile up, where it goes unpaid?
Okay.
Then there's a problem with neighbors.
And Tom, do we, and I just don't know the answer to this question. So if somebody is, has an Airbnb, they're running a business.
Right.
I mean, is there a business license involved where they have to register?
I don't know. The reason we're doing this is because it's commercial use of a residential property, but I don't know if they have to have a business license, do they?
Usually not.
Because with other businesses, I mean, you need a business license.
Correct, right. So this is kind of uncharted territory, and that's the very reason the plant commission's going to be considering it. Right now, we wouldn't, we wouldn't license a home-based business.
Hi. I have a couple of different things, because I'm a long-term renter. But when I first, I grew up in Hinsdale, and when I was gone for twenty, almost twenty-five years, and then when I came back, I came back for five months. And at the time, a friend of mine, I was doing a contract job, and a friend of mine let me stay with her. So then the next year, I would have needed to find a place to rent, but other circumstances forced me to actually move back full-time. So I've also worked in a business my entire life where I do contract work. So I go to different cities all the time. And Airbnb personally is so much more comfortable than going in and out of a hotel for two, three-month assignments. So it would be so much better to be able to come to a town like Hinsdale to do that if I was stuck here for that, for a job.
Yeah.
So I don't know if there's a way to assign a, you know, the responsibility thing to the owner of the home. Obviously, I would think their garbage piling up in a short term would be the responsible, the homeowner. However, I live two doors down, apparently, from the Airbnb gentleman that just spoke, and I've had no problem with anyone that's at their homes. They've been great. They've been respectful to the neighborhood. You know? So if they're going to be like that, you know, it's not a problem.
Yeah.
If they're throwing wild parties, and I can speak to my brother myself, we threw a few in Hinsdale back in the day. It doesn't matter how long the people are there. It could be somebody that's lived there their whole life versus somebody that's there for a weekend. But again, to me, it would be up to the homeowner to police that.
Okay.
So, thanks.
Anyone else? So we have a motion on this?
Yeah, I have a, I guess the plant commission's going to kind of get into the text.
Yes.
I mean, I, D and I in the ordinance, I guess this is under nine one oh eight, seem kind of redundant. One says twice in a twelve-month period, and one says twice in a calendar year.
Yeah.
So I don't know whether that was intentional or...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I...
But I guess the plant commission will work that out.
When we, when I look at notices, when it comes back from the plant commission, not when it's going to...
Right, no, right. I hear you.
So, I mean, I think that the thought is that we send this to the plant commission, and the things I think we ask the plant commission to look at is, you know, whether six months is the appropriate length of time, whether there'd be exceptions for people, you know, whether it be somebody who has, you know, is here on a short-term business and they can verify it, or whether it's a Hinsdale residence that has some need to have something less than six months. And then, two, Alexis and Michelle's point, you know, maybe we ask that we adopt some kind of short-form application you have to submit to the village with each new tenant that would verify either the exception or the length of time of the lease, so that we have more control. Because, you know, as we discussed, you know, we hear about this, is when somebody is throwing a wild party, we have to call the cops on them. So it'd be nice to maybe figure that out in advance by having some kind of form. So I just think we throw it to them and let them fool with the language. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, somebody want to take, make a motion?
Yeah, move to approve a referral to plant commission for review and consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of the Hinsdale zoning code relative to short-term rentals.
Second. We'll call vote.
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler? Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bink?
Aye.
Okay, the next item up to be referred to the plant commission, this stems from the, the issues that we had that were, you know, approached root canals that related to Land Rover in that property on Ogden Avenue where there were the bushes that were, that were not replaced properly. And so we found in several instances, well, the board will look at a site plan, approve the, you know, the front landscape and the building, but the buffer zone to the residential area is, becomes a problem. And so this would, this would codify certain things you'd need for the buffer area as it abuts residential. And so the proposal to the plant commission would be that the screening from, between residential and non-residential use would be, the height would go from six foot to ten feet within at least five feet of the landscape buffer, so the rear side of the property on the non, for the non-residential properties, and that across the street in a budding, the residential property, and then an eight-foot-high solid wooden fence to the side or rear to screen residential properties from non-residential developments. So again, the plant commission can tinker with this, but I think it's a good idea to have stricter screening where we have non-residential uses abutting residential uses. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, well, first of all, I think it's definitely a good idea to, you know, codify those much more clearly. I was having problems reading this, and the way I read this is if you have a non-residential property, okay, so you have to put a fence that's going to be eight foot tall on the rear line.
Right.
And then it says you're going to have a five-foot buffer, which I read is a five-foot buffer on the non-resident's side, and that you're, and now you're going to put landscaping there.
Right.
So why would you want, if I'm building a, okay, so like, like the, over on Franklin where we had the Land Rover?
Yeah.
So they built this beautiful stone fence.
Right.
And then they put the landscaping on the, not on their side, they put it on the resident's side.
Well, that, yeah. But that was kind of a unique situation, right? Because that was the end of a cul-de-sac. And there was no, and the, and the Land Rover parking lot went up right up to the wall. I mean, I think...
Okay, so go back over to the hospital, or not the hospital, but the medical building on Ogden.
Right.
So now they planted all these arborvitae.
Right.
But, you know, they don't need to look out at arborvitae. It's, there's a fence there and...
But I think they wanted the arborvitae in addition to the fence.
Yeah.
So that's why we, so we have the fence to prevent people, I think a lot of people, particularly on Ogden Avenue, don't want people going into their yard. So that's why you have the fence, and then the screening is going to be higher than the fence to provide like buffer, and it's also for sound. So it'd be both bushes and, but again, you know, if we have suggestions, we should communicate those to the plant commission, but this is, this is not fully baked bread. This is kind of like staff's view of what a plan would be, and we give it to them, and then they can, you know, work with it.
Yeah, good. Yeah, I think this is, I mean, because the plant commission is all over stuff like...
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Well, and to Neil's point, wouldn't it be perhaps more practical if we just reversed this? Where we had the fence, what about the parking lot? And we would have the arborvitae on the resident's side?
Is there any problem with that, Rob?
The only problem is you can't maintain that landscaping then. You're putting it on the neighbor to maintain the landscaping that the building owner installed.
Yeah.
Then the neighbor may not, he may have a different idea about what kind of landscaping wants to do.
Yeah, again, it just, but I...
But no, I...
No, but that's a good, that's a good point. But I do think that, you know, we want to put it on the non-resident.
For practical matters, I think that the way that it's constructed or the way it's written is better.
Yeah, yeah.
I just kind of wondered, like, if you have a really nice, solid fence, why do you also need the landscaping?
Well, yeah, that's what I'm...
Yeah.
Just soften it. I mean, it's personal taste, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But if it's on the, if it's on the non-resident's side, I mean, it's for the, it's for the resident's benefit.
Right.
Right? So if it's on the non-resident's side, the residents are just going to see the wall anyway.
They'll see the top two feet, because the wall's supposed to be eight feet, and then the landscaping is supposed to be ten feet, so they'll see the...
The landscaping will grow, right? I mean, I think the point is with a lot of these arborvitae, and I think the whole thing about the medical building is you put in ten-foot arborvitae, and we think they'll go to sixteen or seventeen feet. So we put those in, and you say an eight-foot fence. I thought the fence was more because they didn't want people walking through their yard. And the arborvitae provide more screening, hopefully, for the second story of the residential house. So that's the thought.
Eight feet is a pretty tall fence.
What?
Eight feet is a pretty tall fence.
Yeah, it is.
But it's nowhere near the height that these evergreens would ideally grow to.
No, it's true.
A lot of this came of one-ten, or came from one-ten East Ogden.
Yeah.
And if we had insisted on both at the time, ideally, we would have avoided a lot of that brain damage.
Yeah, yeah.
And typically, there's removal of screening during the construction period. So if you recall, one of the cases was because there was, there were trees there that were then removed.
Right.
So then, and that's going to happen continually. So yes, the trees there is, I mean, I'm sorry, the fences there is the barrier.
And what if a resident doesn't want that?
Well, I think we can, I mean, it's, I mean, I think you work around the ordinance. But I mean, at least you'd give, it gives you a starting point. You know, this is what the rule is. And then, you know, then, then I, in my experience, like Neil brought up, the Land Rover, the configuration of the parking lot and the cul-de-sac that that ended into the, to the, you know, the back of the building was kind of unique, and so this really didn't work. So I think we could, but I think we should have some structure, at least something to start with, you know, and I think that's what this provides.
It's a good idea.
Okay? Does somebody want to make a motion?
Send it to the plant commission.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve a referral to plant commission for review and consideration of an ordinance amending section nine dash one oh seven, buffers and landscaping of title nine, district regulation of general applicability of the Hinsdale zoning code relative to non-dwelling uses abutting residential uses.
Second.
Okay.
We'll call vote.
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler? Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bink?
Aye.
Tollway, I know they got an email that the Tollway is willing to come and talk to us.
Yeah, we're going to have that on February first.
Okay.
Okay. I also heard from Chief King, and it was, those vehicles were purchased on a joint purchase agreement.
Okay.
So then we're going to confirm that item seven D can go on the consent agenda for next time.
Yeah. Tammy Shell, the one hundred and fiftieth update?
My understanding is as of date, we have approximately seventy thousand dollars in donations for this wonderful campaign and project. I believe we are gearing up to get our bids out shortly, and hopefully, when the weather warms up, we'll be able to break ground and move forward. Oh, and we're going to be keeping the donation pipeline open. So if anybody still would like to make a tax-deductible donation to this project, now is the time.
Thank you. Any staff reports? Trustee comments? No reason for a closed session? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. We'll call vote.
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler? Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bink?
Aye.
Thank you.